Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I am Commissioner-in-Chair Rick Vest, to my left Commissioner-in-Vice Chair Krista Yocum, and to her left Commissioner Matt Schulte, to my right Commissioner Sean Flaherty and Chelsea Johnson. Would you please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin the meeting.
Copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE dot gov. Putting options available upon request. Brings us to item one, minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on April eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. With approval?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two, claims, two A. Approval of the claims processed through April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five?
I move approval of the claims. Second.
Motion and second to approve item two A. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Two B. Approval of the claims, including billings for goods and services beyond the ninety-day time period provided Nebraska revised statute, chapter twenty-three dash one thirty-five, for Johnson Controls Incorporated, dated April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, for a total of nine thousand nine hundred fifteen dollars and sixty cents, and the overhead door co. of Lincoln dated April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, for a total of two hundred and ninety dollars.
I would entertain a motion.
Approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item two B. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three is a special recognition. The recognition of individuals who provide care and maintenance of abandoned and neglected cemeteries in Lancaster County.
Please come forward, my friend.
Well, good morning. I didn't know if you were going to read that resolutions before I came up or not, so.
We can read it if you would like now or after you've spoken.
Well, I don't care. It's your meeting, so let me just tell a little bit about these cemeteries. So I appreciate the county board recognizing the folks that I call care for these cemeteries for us because they do more than just the mowing on these. And I'm just going to go through them here and then I know the resolution will recognize them. But so Asplin Cemetery, if you remember a couple of years ago, this is one of our late last acquisitions that had been abandoned. David Almery is a neighbor to that. He mows that cemetery. He'd been mowing that prior to us taking that over, and when I reached out to him, he was very willing to continue to do that. And what I found out with all of these folks is they have just civic pride in wanting to do this for the county. It's a way of giving back for a lot of them and just pride in their cemetery that maybe they've lived by their entire lives. The County Poor Farm is the one that we have that has no headstones on it. It's about a half acre plot out here on Northwest Twenty-seventh. Larry England is a neighbor to that, and he reached out to us. So that was one that we just did not mow because it had no headstones on it, and he felt it would look a little nicer if he would take care of that for us. So he volunteered to do that for us. Before I forget, is there anyone in here that manages these? Because we did invite everybody to come, and we tried to do this after the snowstorm, and that didn't work. Deet Cemetery, clear down south of Hickman. This is the one the Boy Scouts troop helps take care of, so this is pretty neat. You guys stood up and pledged to the flag? The county board didn't used to do that. I don't know if any of you were around back then. When we invited that Boy Scout troop to come up, they wanted to present the flag that day, and ever since then, the county board has done the pledge of allegiance. So they, the youth helped influence the county board, but I thought that was neat that they did that, and now you continue to do that tradition, so.
That was before anybody on this board was on the board.
What's that?
Yeah, it was.
That's a good story for the newsletter.
You know, when I've been around this long, I get to give you history once in a while. But that's a cemetery. When I took over, I thought, geez, if I'm in charge of these cemeteries, I'm going to go around at least to see what they look like. And that one had not been taken care of at all. Brad Johnson, at the time, who's at Corrections, had boys on that Boy Scout troop, and they came to us, and that's kind of evolved in that cemetery. As even received, one of the kids had received their Eagle Scout badge on fixing that cemetery and redoing the headstones and fencing. Evangelical, Terry Bryley, lives right next to that cemetery. And when I talk about caring for it, I mean, he just took it upon himself to build new, nice steel gates for the cemetery and has really taken pride in doing that. He has mentioned to me that he's getting a little up there in years and not sure how long he's going to be able to continue to do that, but he has again for this year. Jordan Cemetery, this is one that we had someone else mowing when I started. They moved away from the property. It took one stop out of a neighbor's property, he's like, absolutely, I'll do that for you. And he actually went in. It's one of our larger cemeteries, a ton of trees on that cemetery. But he took his skid loader in and cleaned up all the back part that we'd not mowed for years and just really cleaned it up and took some pride in it, and looks really nice. Actually, has a Civil War veteran buried at that cemetery, but always has a flag by the headstone. Apoff and Highland Precinct, so Troy Henning, works for County Engineering, takes care of both those cemeteries. And several years ago, they actually called and wanted to take some trees out just to make the care easier out there, and we allowed them to do that. So again, people just step up and do what's necessary out there. And then Lincoln Tree Service also came to us at one point as a way to get back to the community, that they get to serve, they just maintain the trees in all the cemeteries. So I just leave it up to them to evaluate them. We've got a couple out of it. Evangelical, now that we're going to have them take those trees out. But that was just another thing that they wanted to do to get back to the community. And prior to that, we'd paid like nine hundred dollars to take a tree down at Jordan. So that's a pretty big benefit for the county to have them come in. And if you ever see these guys work, they're up there and hanging around on ropes in the trees and doing a great job for us. So thank you for recognizing them today.
Very good. Thank you for calling attention to all these folks. Like, so many times we sit here and hear the efforts of people that help make our community a better place, and here's another group that serves the greater good without drawing any attention themselves. So we're honored to get to honor them.
Well, and state statute only requires that we have those cemeteries mowed once two weeks prior to Memorial Day. So for them to mow them all season long, I think, really says a lot and keeps them looking nice. Keeps people from dumping trash on them because they look trashy. I mean, they don't get destroyed, I think they're in pretty good shape, so.
Part of our history. Mr. Clerk, do you have a proclamation there?
I do. Before the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lancaster, Nebraska, a resolution in the matter of recognizing and expressing appreciation for individuals who provide care and maintenance of abandoned and neglected cemeteries in Lancaster County. Whereas Nebraska revised statutes, chapter twelve dash eight oh five and twelve dash eight oh eight authorize county boards to expend funds for the care and maintenance of abandoned and neglected cemeteries, including pioneer cemeteries founded prior to January first, nineteen hundred, which contain graves of homesteaders, immigrants, prairie farmers, pioneers, sod busters, first-generation Nebraskans, and Civil War veterans. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lancaster, Nebraska, is responsible for the maintenance of seven abandoned pioneer cemeteries, and the Lancaster County We Control Department ensures the care of these cemeteries through contracted service and volunteer efforts. And whereas the care and preservation of these cemeteries would not be possible without the dedicated efforts of volunteers who provide invaluable time and resources to maintain these historic sites. And whereas the following individuals have demonstrated outstanding commitment to the care and maintenance of abandoned and neglected cemeteries in Lancaster County. David Almery, Asplin Cemetery; Larry England, County Poor Farm; Clark Livesfield, Deet Cemetery; Terry Bryley, Evangelical Cemetery; Dave Miller, Jordan Cemetery; Troy Henning, Apoff Cemetery and Highland Precinct Cemetery; Gem Haas, Volunteer Tree Maintenance for All Cemeteries. Whereas these individuals significantly contribute to the preservation of the history and heritage of Lancaster County by ensuring that the cemeteries are well-maintained and respected. And whereas their dedication serves as a testament to the spirit of volunteerism and services that enriches the fabric of the community in Lancaster County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lancaster, Nebraska, hereby recognizes and expresses its sincere appreciation to the individuals listed herein for their outstanding service in preserving for current and future generations the abandoned and neglected cemeteries in Lancaster County. In witness thereof, we have here and to sign on April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lancaster, Nebraska.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We'll deal with that. Yeah, Krista.
I would just like to ask, maybe this is already planned for, but that each of these volunteers get a copy of this recognition mailed to them?
And take care of that?
Yeah.
It's a good idea. We'll deal with this in new business then.
Commissioners, that then brings us to item four, consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by Commissioner, by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items will be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are the approval of A, amendments to the following county contracts. C dash twenty-four dash zero five nine three, excuse me, with the Museum of American Speed for a bicycle motocross exhibit. C dash twenty-two dash zero two five two with Midwest Towing and Recovery to provide the services of towing and storage of towed vehicles and other property for the county. The amendment renews a contract from April twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-five through April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-eight. The cost of the county is not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. C dash twenty-four dash zero one three seven with Matheson Dry Gas for the annual supply of industrial and medical gas. C dash twenty-three dash zero five one nine with Fifth Asset Incorporated, doing business as Debtbook for debt and lease management software and consulting services. B, right-of-way contracts with the following. Tam Square Realty LLC, North One Hundred and Forty-Eighth Street and Holded Street, in the total amount of thirty-eight thousand four hundred and five dollars. Kim L. May, South Three Hundred and Fourteenth Street and Yankee Hill Road, in the amount of eight hundred and eleven dollars. Thomas and Lori Bellinghausen, Sawtilla Road Improvement, in the amount of nine hundred and thirty dollars. Lucky Lands LLC, Sawtilla Road Improvement, in the amount of five hundred and seventy dollars. David and Lori Lewis, Sawtilla Road Improvement, in the total amount of forty-three thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. Oberland LLC, Sawtilla Road Improvement, in the amount of thirty thousand five hundred dollars. D and S Egger Family Trust, South One Hundred and Tenth Street and Martell Road, in the amount of two hundred and seventy-one dollars. C, a grant contract with Nebraska Children and Families Foundation for the Primrose School at Huddle Program, in the total amount of twenty-four thousand dollars. Item four D is going to be held for a future week, and that leaves item four E, received and placed in file the following quarterly reports for county attorney and county sheriff.
I move approval of the consent items. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item five, our public hearing action items. After a public hearing has been conducted and closed, action on the item that was subject of the public hearing will be scheduled as a separate public hearing action item. Because the public hearing has been conducted and closed on the item, no further testimony or evidence will be accepted and admitted during the public hearing action item portion of the agenda. The first one is five A, resolution in the matter of the Comprehensive Plan Conformance two five zero zero one, request to amend the county one- and six-year bridge and road program.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm going to vote with the Lancaster County Engineering Department. This is a request to amend the county one and six, Bridge and Road Program. For specifically Bridge G two two two, which is located on North Ninety-eighth Street. That little green dot there. We received the county bridge match from the Nebraska Department of Transportation, which is why we are proposing to move this bridge construction from fiscal years twenty-six through thirty to fiscal year twenty-five.
We deeply appreciate that, and this is a really important bridge in this area. And last week, I gave all the Commissioners a map, which shows how not all the roads that go north to south cross Highway six. The choices are few and far between, as folks say. Eighty-four streets, not a very viable crossing for farm equipment, and without Ninety-eighth Street in play, you go all the way to Waverly and One Hundred and Forty-eighth. So it does create a real difficulty for those involved in agriculture in this area, plus the business that's in that area. So really appreciate the Engineering Department stepping up, getting the funding, and moving this project forward as efficiently as we can. We know these things don't happen overnight, but thank you for all your efforts on this. Any questions? We've covered this, so we will be taking action at this time.
Yeah, this is good news. I move approval.
Motion and second to approve item five A. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Commissioners, that brings us to five B, resolution in the matter of text amendment two five zero zero three to the Lancaster County Subdivision Regulation, Chapter four, Section four point one three A, as provided in Exhibit A.
I'm going to vote with the Lancaster County Engineering Department. This is our proposed text amendment to the Lancaster County Subdivision Resolution, specifically Chapter four, Section four point one three, drainage. We are proposing to just add a statement clarifying and what our drainage requirements are, and that is stormwater discharge post-development shall be controlled in such a manner that the post-development peak runoff does not exceed the pre-development peak runoff for the two-year, ten-year, and hundred-year storm. So in summary, post-development flow is less than or equal to pre-development flow. And the two-year, ten-year, and hundred-year storm are typical engineering design storms that we design our projects to. And this language specifically mimics the City of Lincoln's Drainage Criteria Manual as well.
I move approval. Second.
Yeah. We've had a lot of information on this, and thank you. Motion and second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Commissioners, that brings us to item six, new business. Six A, resolution in the matter of recognizing and expressing appreciation for individuals who provide care and maintenance of abandoned and neglected cemeteries in Lancaster County.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion and second to approve. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Six B, resolution in the matter of amending the county purchasing manual to reflect recent statutory changes in the Nebraska County Purchasing Act.
Good morning, people. Purchasing agent Lancaster County. Here today to update the purchasing manual to align with state statute. County purchasing act has updated and raised some thresholds, so we're going to try to align the county purchasing manual to match with those thresholds. That affects micro purchase, informal bids, informal bids.
What are they going to?
Micro go up to fifteen from ten, informal from fifteen to seventy, formal from seventy and above.
I move approval. Second.
Motion and second to approve item six B. Question. Thank you for being here. Please call the roll.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Six C, declaration in the matter of declaring a disaster an emergency pursuant to Nebraska revised statute eighty-one dash eight two nine point five zero, in response to a severe winter storm in Blizzard in the County of Lancaster, Nebraska.
Good morning, Jim David, Sabre Director, Lincoln Lancaster County Emergency Management. This disaster declaration is necessary for our participation in the ongoing recovery process. It ensures our eligibility to seek reimbursement for the damage and the response and recovery efforts related to the March nineteenth Blizzard. Even though the governor included Lancaster County in the initial state declaration, I needed to wait until I verified we met our local damage assessment threshold for damage to public property and critical infrastructure. So once I received that verification early last week, I asked that this declaration be placed on the next available meeting, which is today.
Any questions or comments, folks?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the disaster and emergency declaration. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Six D, a recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the county engineer to ward and execute a purchase order to Ace Eaton Metals for spring county culverts in the amount of ninety-three thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixteen cents.
Good morning, Curtis Tann, Assistant Row Maintenance Superintendent. This is a group of culverts, fifteen to be exact, that are deemed in poor condition. We want to get them on the schedule to get, for, and get them replaced, so.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Do you know the location or the general location of where these fifteen are located?
Oh, yeah. I know exactly where they all are.
Do you have like a quadrant or some?
There's several in different, most of them are in our District One and District Two areas, and there's a couple more that are down in the three and four. But we're trying to spread them all out, at least five culverts per district each year, and then some larger ones for our grading crew to get, take care of. But we're trying to, you know, mix them up, so each district gets a little bit of, you know, those poor-conditioned culverts replaced, so.
It's an ongoing process.
Yes, it is.
Motion and second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Six E, a letter of support of the Southeast Nebraska Affordable Housing Council's application to establish a middle-income workforce housing investment fund within Lancaster County communities.
Good morning, Dennis Meyer, Lancaster County Budget and Fiscal Officer. This letter of support is for the ability to go out for a grant. SEND would be the group that would be applying for it. It would take place here in Lancaster County. You know, we are looking at the ability, it's really going to be another, you know, really new owner-occupied housing. So this type of grant, if received, would allow for us to kind of start the process of building anywhere from three to six houses throughout the communities in Lancaster County. Once those are sold, then it gives us the ability to just kind of keep, keep building them as needed.
If I could, so I did reconnect with Jim Worrellman with SEND after our meeting last week where we briefly discussed whether we might want to go above the minimum match of two hundred and fifty. So I reached back out to him to just ask, you know, how competitive is the cycle? Would that be a significant help for the application? And he indicated that he thinks it would have a significant impact if we were able to go above the minimum match, just because there's a lot of folks who are concerned that this might be the last year that we, that this funding will be available. Of course, no one knows for sure whether that will be the case, but just with the state budget concerns. So he does think it's going to be really competitive, and that even if we were to go above the minimum by fifty K, that would indicate that there's a real commitment from the county. So I would move that we increase it from two fifty to three hundred thousand.
I will second that. I had the opportunity to talk to some
I had the opportunity to talk to some Commissioners yesterday who've been doing this, and what a benefit that has been in their county. They were very excited about it, and so I think that's a really good move.
I'm supportive of this, as long as we, we're all in agreement that this is coming out of like, you know, either ARP interest or gaming or something. Like, I think ARP interest is probably the right place, but I could talk about other sources. I just want, I want us all committed to the idea that it's not going to come out of property taxes, and that it's not going to impact the general fund, and I think we all are. I'm seeing nods, so, yeah. I'm in support of that.
Great.
All right. Anything else?
And I would just mention on that is that, you know, it won't be until next year's budget, so as we're going through budget hearings, as we're going through that, we'll kind of finalize where that funding will actually come from.
Right, right. We can figure it out then.
Yes.
ARP interest is the thing that I think right now makes the most sense to me, but any way to cut it, I don't want it impacting the general fund. That's my only caveat in any of this.
Okay.
And I don't think it has. Saying it should.
Yeah.
Very good. So we have a motion and a second to approve the letter of support to SEND with the addition that we would raise our match from the minimum of 250 to 300,000.
Is that E or F? Or are you putting both in one?
I think it's E because the letter of support, now, I guess, Dennis, you tell me.
So F is the commit, so Matt, tell me, is F the commitment letter?
Yes.
So the commitment letter will be the one bumped to 300,000.
There's not mention of it in the letter of support.
In the letter of support there, I'll go back and double-check. If it is, I'll amend them, and before the end of the meeting, I'll have them back here for signature.
Well, just to be clear, we all know what we're saying, but so we're, for now, we have a motion and a second to approve the letter of support. Thank you, Matt, for clarifying. Please call.
Wait, can we just one second?
We don't, we don't have a motion to approve this.
That wasn't, yeah, that wasn't.
There is no mention of the dollar amount in the letter of support. So I believe what I'm hearing is that there is a motion to approve F with a dollar amount of 300. Then I believe we will need a second motion to approve E.
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody good with that? Matt, does that make sense to you? Matt Hanson?
I think that's right.
Okay. So motion and a second to approve item F. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes, with the understanding that F is up to 300,000.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. So for the record, that was action on item 6F, the commitment letter to match $250,000 in resources for the middle-income workforce housing fund. We are now returning back to 6E, the letter of support of the Southeast Nebraska Affordable Housing Council's application.
And Mr. Clerk, we increase that to 300,000.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
I move approval of the letter of support. Second.
Okay. Motion and second to approve item E. Please call the roll.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, Commissioners, I believe that takes us to 6G. A contract with Capital City Transfer Services Incorporated for the annual service of coroner transport. The cost of the county shall not exceed $200,000.
Good morning, Commissioners, Pacan and Lancaster County Attorney. One of the things we've been trying to do is to get our contracts more in line with our budget cycle. But on this one, when we approached to do that, I think, well, Capital City is going to be making additional increases, I think, in the future. So by going with this contract at this time, it costs us a little bit more money in the front end, but then over the four-year commitment of it, it's going to be less because the anticipated increases that he has going forward are not in this contract. We're kind of taking advantage of getting it early, signing it early.
I move approval. Second.
Motion and second to approve. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6H, agreement with Thomas &amp; Thomas Court Reporters on behalf of the county clerk's office for court reporting and transcribing services. The cost of the county is $4,578.75.
Morning, Commissioners. Andrew Barnas, Lancaster County Attorney's Office. This agreement is essentially to outsource the professional services of transcribing the bill of exceptions for the ongoing solar farm litigation.
So, I mean, it's pretty simple. Outsourcing transactions on any legal proceedings here.
No. I move approval. Second.
Motion and second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
6I, an agreement with Savvy Solutions, PBC, to make the Savvy platform available to county employees.
Morning, Commissioners. I'm Kristi Hernandez with Human Resources. So this agreement is to provide county employees access to the Savvy platform so that they can have access to experts who can help them reduce student debt if they're carrying debts. So there is no investment by the county. It would be something that employees would pay for, but we would be partnering with Savvy to provide the platform.
It's, it's good to have them have that access to experts that can help with that because it can be complicated.
Right. I move approval. Second.
Motion and second to approve. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Brings us to item 7, legislative update.
I'm not aware of anything. I don't see anyone in the house, Mr. Clerk.
Item 8, public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak on items relating to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on items relating to county business not on the agenda? Anyone wishing to speak? I see none.
Item 9, announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, April 17, 2025, at 8:30 a.m. in room 112 of the County City Building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, April 22, 2025, at 9 a.m. in room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447, or commish@lancaster NE.gov. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on L-NK-TV. L-NK-TV is available on Allo Channel 2 and Spectrum Channel 1300. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit Lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. L-NK-TV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Item 10 is adjournment.
I move we adjourn. Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are adjourned. I will now call to order the Lancaster County Board of Equalization for Tuesday, April 15, 2025. Mr. Clerk?
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meeting Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All writ materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed at the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Printing options are available upon request. Brings us to item 1, minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, April 1, 2025.
Move approval.
Motion and second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
I will abstain, as I was not present.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 2 is the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rules.
I move approval of the additions and deductions. Second.
Motion and second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 3, a notice of taxable status for the following for the Nebraska Public Power
Good morning, Commissioners. Jacob Van Pelt of the Assessor's Office. On this particular parcel, this was a newly purchased parcel by the NPPD. We were notified of the ownership change just after we sent out our March 1 taxable status notifications. NPPD notified us of an active farm lease on this parcel. Due to the farm lease, we recommend taxable status for 2025 since it will not be used for a public purpose for this year.
Any discussion, Commissioners? Any questions for Jacob?
That's pretty clear.
I would entertain a motion.
I would move approval. Second.
Motion and second to approve this taxable status. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4, appeal on the notice of taxable status for the following from the Board of Regents of the University of Nebraska on two parcels.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jennifer Clark with the Lancaster County Attorney's Office. The individuals who filed this are not here. I don't know how far you want me to go into the reasoning to deny these. I know that some of the Commissioners were here 2019, 2020, when the Board of Regents tried to do this previously. They actually appealed it to Turk. Turk actually denied it, denied all their arguments. So I do have that previous Turk order, if you would like to review that. I also will let the Commissioners know that myself and Mr. Barnas went actually out to these Starbucks, and they're actually charging tax, which you can't do if you are not, you know, if you want to be exempt, as well as the fact is that the taxpayer wants this commission to identify these as exempt properties. However, they don't follow or adhere to the regulations as well as statute. Primarily, you have to parcel out these different, I mean, if, I'm assuming probably all of you have been to the schools, different areas, and they have a bunch of different stores, different food areas and everything. So first and foremost, just because the primary use is for public policy, which is educational purpose, these individual stores are not necessarily promoting educational purpose, which then falls in line with the fact that it does not adhere to the educational purpose. You don't need to have a $10 latte to continue on with your education. Some people might argue that. I, I know. There actually does have cafeterias in both of these buildings as well, where they can get their 50-cent latte. So I would ask that you deny, like I said, I do have the previous Turk order, as well as I did copy my receipts showing the tax from these different Starbucks, if the Commissioners would like to have those copies. But I would ask that you deny this, these requests on both parcels for both of the unions.
A move that we deny?
Second.
Motion and second to deny. Any further discussion? You know, for some of us, we've been through this rodeo before, and it appears nothing has changed, so.
It's Starbucks now. It was a Scooter's.
That has changed, I guess.
There is that. We have a motion and a second to deny. Please call the vote.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion to deny carries. Brings us to item 5, our public hearing.